Good. All right, we'd like to welcome everybody that's here and also those that are on YouTube Live to our city council work session. It's Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, and it's 5:37 PM. So, we'd like to roll call, we have three here in person and there's supposed to be two others that are on Zoom. So, we'll check and see if they're available, they're here, but we can do business with three, so we'll get started. Is there anyone here that would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance tonight?
I can, Mayor.
Thank you.
Please stand.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lynn. We'd also like to have an invocation or inspirational thought, is there anybody willing to offer that tonight? John, thank you.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the many blessings that are ours, for the opportunity to gather as community leaders and residents and be able to discuss and deliberate about the things that can benefit our community. We're grateful for the moisture that we've been receiving the last few weeks and we're grateful for it. We're grateful for the celebrations that we're able to have as a community to bring our residents closer together with Orchard Days. And we ask that thy Spirit might be with us this evening in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right, we have somebody to introduce, you should have stayed up there, John. Come on up, we have a new employee for the city, right?
I'll let him answer all your hard questions and introduce himself, but I just wanted to bring Eric Holt. He's our new full-time recreation supervisor over sports and has been here since Jan-
November.
November, wow.
Wow.
Time flies, November, so we're gonna get it before the first year, bring him here. But Eric's doing a great job working with all of our youth sports, in fact, in an hour or so, he's gonna be running a horseshoe tournament. So, a jack-of-all-trades, I'm gonna let him go ahead and introduce himself, but he's doing a great job and glad to have him as part of our Recreation Department and Community Services Department.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Tell us about yourself.
I recently graduated from BYU Idaho. Before I started working here, I worked in nonprofit organizing ultimate frisbee leagues and camps across the state of Utah. I'm still fairly involved in that, I coached teams and I'm actually headed to a tournament this weekend, a national tournament. I just love sports and love providing those opportunities for people. I feel like our sports are a way that we learn how to be a productive member of our society and to handle our emotions and to deal with difficult situations. And so, the more that we can provide those opportunities for kids to learn that and really be able to deal with those things, the better we can serve our society.
How do you like working for Santaquin City?
It's pretty great. I-
Good answer.
I love, actually, I love in the small-town feel that my job has a little bit of everything. And so, no day is the same, I'm working events and then I'm working sports and then it's coaches and it's different every day, but I get to learn all about it, so.
Makes the day go by faster, doesn't it?
Too fast, frequently.
Good. Any questions, council, for him? We're just glad to have you.
Yeah, I just hear a lot of positive things, so thank you for what you're doing.
I'm glad that it's positive, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, discussion items, number one, discussion regarding East Side Frontage Road. Let's have it, Ben.
Okay. Mayor, council, it's been a crazy week, it's our orchard week and all those good things that are going on in our community. And at this time, we have the opportunity to review some of our long-term planning. Unfortunately, our Community Services Director is feeling ill today, and so he's not here, so kind of jumping through a few hoops and-
It was all that party you did last night over at the park.
I was glad he was there because he helped out our general plan folks who were there gathering input from the community. And the more we can have our residents participate, the better off we're gonna be. Because, as I've said over and over again, it is the tool by which our future will be charted. The last time our general plan was done, it was done with half the population or less than we have currently. And so, at least half the voices that are here today weren't here to voice their opinions. And gathering their opinions today is very critical for us, ensuring that we build on what has been built on in the past and we can continue a legacy of growing our community to make it the greatest place we can to live. With that said, we did want to bring something to you, and that is the East Side Frontage Road discussion. And to start off, I just want to preface a couple of different things. First, I know that there's a lot of discussion on Facebook, or so I've been told, I haven't had a chance to breathe to be able to read much of it. And maybe I'm sleeping better than some because of that. But we have to have items come before our elected and appointed officials, you, the council, our Planning Commission, our DRC, in order for us to work through issues and make the end product better than what was originally proposed, so that we can all have something that's gonna be beneficial to our community in general. And so, that's the whole purpose. And so, immediately when something is put on an agenda, I just really want to make sure there are processes, there are stages. Conceptual level is really the back of a napkin type of scratching where we talk about ideas and concepts and we gather information from everybody that we possibly can, including the public, and we hold public hearings, so that we can make it a better product. And then, items progress on if they make it through conceptual and things are looking good, then the developer feels confident enough to invest significant money into engineering, really serious plans. And then, it goes through the final stage and we have construction and acceptance and homes can eventually be built. We are still at the conceptual phase of the Patterson property, which has been named the Santaquin Estates as it's evolved and progressed. And it's important to note that the Patterson family, who's been owning this land for years and years, have property rights. Those property rights have been entrusted into them and they have the ability to develop. It's always a balance between the property rights of the individual and the property rights of the community, which is we want to make sure that nothing comes in that's gonna be harmful to the community. But that relates to the East Side Frontage discussion because that is one of the critical elements that came from the first two iterations of the concept of the Pattersons voiced by our elected leaders and also voiced by the public is, how are we gonna handle the traffic issues out there? And so, I'm gonna rely heavily on the mayor and Norm as I continue this presentation that they have not seen, because I put it together last 30 minutes, because they were involved in meetings with UDOT to help us to understand the traffic issues better and help to get UDOT to buy in on how we would proceed. So, to start off really quickly, as far as the East Side Frontage is concerned, and maybe I'm not on the right thing. Let me restart that. The Patterson property, and to help orient the community, this is north up here. Right up here is the Maverick parcel, over here is the intersection of Maverick and 198, right there in US 6. And the assisted living center is right over here, right? In this general area. One of the first steps that we go through is what's called a yield plan. So, the majority of this property is zoned R10, and there is a sliver of this property right up here, right about that size, which is commercial. And so, one of the very first things we do is look at how many lots they would be entitled to receive in this area following the R10 principle. What does the property yield? Now, that doesn't get into engineering and how roads eventually could lay out, but it really gets into what is the maximum number that the property owners have right to in that property. And that helps us in the design, and ultimately, a proposal was put together by the property owners that took that layout and the street configuration, and they put a proposal together. And this proposal was not well-received by our elected leaders, not well-received by the public, but it did address a couple of different things. And one of the things that the initial proposal presented was this connectivity from the Oak Summit subdivision up on the East Bench and provided connectivity to Main Street. And the reason that is so critical is because the majority of our travelers are from the East Bench have to come out onto the Frontage Road to be able to come out to the Maverick intersection. And so, having connectivity provides a major egress to get people off the East Bench and to get them off the East Bench in such a way that they can cross an intersection and get to the freeway. The other item that this addressed was the fact that the city is in need of a future debris basin up here, and the city can try to acquire that through one of two means, and that is one, we can buy the land outright, and that becomes a burden on the taxpayers to come up with the money to buy land. Or, the second is to work with the property owner with regard to entitlements, and that can yield the dedication of land. Needless to say, this was not well-received and a lot of feedback was given, and the developer took a major step back to take a look at what could be done. And so, the next iteration, I'm using this one because it shows the road connectivity of Oak Summit a little bit better and how it would tie into this intersection here. And this is where it really comes into the discussion with regard to the interchange in UDOT. And that is, you can see in the past that Santaquin City has taken steps to preserve corridor. In the future, this 900 East will come through and a wise council from decades ago secured this right of way so that this road could connect. And some benefits of that is it alleviates traffic and congestion off the intersection of US 6 and 198. It also allows for all of the residents of the East Bench to be able to go up to the high school or the junior high or go up to Payson and not have to even go through the intersection at all. Lastly, it allows for traffic to be able to come out to the future interchange, going straight through the intersection instead of turning left. And one of the concerns that we have had for the longest time is how do we improve that intersection? Because the space there is so limited. And so, we've been putting constant pressure on UDOT to say, what is your long-term plan? How are you gonna reconfigure this interchange? And the interchange itself is gonna be evolving over time because UDOT invests a heck of a lot of money into its infrastructure. They want to get the longest amount of life they can out of it before they completely reconfigure. So, they do things like making it so that there's two, now we have two lanes coming off I-15 westbound, south I-15 to westbound 6. Just recently, you saw eastbound US 6 now has a free flow to southbound I-15. Those type of things alleviate congestion. Does it take care of the long-term problem? No, that's gonna take a full rebuild. And so, we're trying to figure out with UDOT, how is that rebuild gonna look? And so, we've been putting pressure on and through a series of meetings, the mayor and the staff meet with Region 3 Director and his staff at least quarterly, trying to put plans together. And UDOT has now funded a study to look at at least the short-term objectives of how we can take on some immediate reconfiguration. And so, some of those things that we've looked at is, one, how do we enhance the traffic coming down US 6 and catching the freeway northbound? And the problem that we have is that the free flow of traffic down southbound 198 means that that traffic continues, even if it's a red light, it's a right-on-red. And so, that traffic continues, and so, the number of cars that can turn left and go northbound is insignificant and it creates a huge amount of storage, right? It starts going backwards. And then, lastly, we have the entire East Bench south of Main Street, when they're trying to catch I-15 either north or southbound, they have to turn left and they're competing because once the light is green, they're competing with the southbound 198 traffic. And so, you're getting a few cars into the intersection until that flows through and then they're turning left. And continually, we hear from UDOT that this intersection is too close to the interchange and we need to- Can I have you not bump it? You keep bumping it, okay, thanks. And so, that's the issue that we're dealing with. So, dealing with 900 East is very important. And so, one of the things that is critical for us is seeing that connectivity of Oak Summit straight out to the I-15 interchange and making it so that the East Bench traffic can come up, catch Main Street and go straight through the intersection instead of having to turn left right there. That's a big concern. And long-term in the future, one of the concerns is we really need to see 9th East be able to tie in. And the councils of the past had that foresight to be able to see that. Well, in talking with UDOT, they have now funded that study, so they're looking at the interim changes. But one of the things that they've consistently said is, we're pressing them, saying, look, right now, we have an open field. There is no development out there yet. Help us to understand what you're gonna need to be able to help the better, the flow of this traffic. Because, let's face it, US 6 and 198 and I-15, we don't have any jurisdiction, they're all UDOT facilities. How can we help you, how can we be partners with you to help facilitate that? Because someday in the future, if this completely builds out, you're gonna be knocking down homes or businesses and that's the last thing that we want to see happen. We want to see a really good flow of traffic. So, what can we do? And one of the feedback is, well, look, we can't tell you specifically what to do because the study hasn't been completed. And we haven't looked at all the options and they have all the processes they follow. But as a general guideline, what UDOT is telling us is, the more you can move traffic away from that intersection and the more you can preserve corridor, the better off the city is gonna be. And so, we took that direction and we met with the developer of this property to say, look, here is some of our concerns. One of the concerns that we have is how, we really need to preserve corridor here in order to enhance the traffic concerns of the entire East Bench. Is it gonna solve all problems and does it contemplate everything? No, but neither did this one up here when we obtained it from Mr. McMullin. We obtained it because we knew it was something that we had jurisdiction at the time, for whatever reasons, that he was looking to get something passed by the city. And we worked with him, I say "we," I mean all of our predecessors, I wasn't here, you weren't here, but acquired this parcel. And not knowing exactly how it would connect in, it was just good foresight. And so, that's the same philosophy that we're taking right now with working with this current property owner to say, look, we need to preserve some corridor. How will it come out, how will it tie in? We don't know, but at least it preserves corridor. So, that's a critical thing, and then moving traffic off that interchange. So, those are the recommendations coming from UDOT. And so, what we have before us today, and we're not here to talk about this Patterson development specifically, this iteration, that'll come to you at a later date, we follow a process and that process is that we go to the Planning Commission and we receive feedback and we go to the, and we receive feedback from the public and we receive feedback from our engineers and our police and our fire, so that we can make a plan better. Is the plan that they presented here today the plan? Is it, or it's already been approved, as it said on Facebook? No, this is tantamount to the back of a napkin. But it's something that we can look at and put our arms around to say, what are the things about this that we like and what are the things that we don't like, so that we can try to come up with a better project overall. So, in this particular case, we met with the developer of this property, who was representing the family, and we said, look, this is the concern, we are being told by UDOT that we need to preserve its corridor. And so, what we're really looking at is a swath of land approximately 80 to 100 feet wide that would preserve corridor. How will this tie in? We're not exactly sure, but we need to preserve the corridor. The second aspect is, that is of benefit, is because we're preserving corridor, we now have a geographical barrier between residential areas and that commercial. Remember, there's a commercial strip right here, and the question was, does that commercial strip go to residential? Or does it go to commercial? Or is there some combination? Now, we have a really good geographical barrier that expands roughly one-acre max strip of commercial into a five-acre usable commercial parcel. And that's really beneficial to the overall area. Now, if this corridor is not needed in the future, that commercial area could easily expand. So, all we're really looking at doing is trying to preserve that corridor. But the property owner still has rights, they have a yield plan of 93, and now we have a concept that they have proposed that is 85 lots. There are still problems with it. One of the problems right off the bat that we saw, and we published it almost immediately from when we received it, the public received this. We look at things like, well, you got homes here that will back out onto Main Street. That doesn't really make sense. You know what, there needs to be some kind of discussion here. We need to have, we still do need to preserve the future debris basin, and they did address that. So, we're really grateful for them addressing that. Something else that they needed to address and why there's a big change from the last iteration, I think there's been, this is the third iteration or fourth iteration now, is that there is a power corridor through here and they can't easily move that major power line. And so, if you look at this, you can see that this power line is crossing mostly property lines all the way through. I know there is a post on Facebook that indicated, wait, I thought the city doesn't like cul-de-sacs. That's not the case at all, cul-de-sacs are very acceptable within our city. It's just that we can't have cul-de-sacs that go on and on and on, because you have water, you have traffic issues and you have water issues where the water doesn't get good flow because it doesn't have two connection points.
And snow removal.
What's that?
And snow removal.
And snow removal, that's right. And so, we want to limit the size of those cul-de-sacs. But a cul-de-sac in this location actually kind of lends itself to take care of the power line issue. So, they're addressing some of their issues, they're addressing some of our issues. And it is really down to 85 lots from what they're entitled to, which is 93. Now, some of the other things that they haven't considered that we need to address is that two of those lots are probably going to be needed for a storm drainage. They have to take care of their own storm drainage in that area. And so, that'll be addressed as well in future iterations. This by no means is the final thing, and we really want to hear from the public about other concerns because clearly, the public had significant concerns with traffic and that's what we've been trying to address. So, that's where we're at. So, lastly, this latest iteration addresses a lower number of units than they're entitled to, which is great. The downside to this is that these lots right here are R10, but these lots up here are just barely under 10,000 square feet. And in order to get the same or a close to the same number of units, they are proposing some multifamily units, which I know is very undesirable by the city at this point. And that comes back to a larger question and that can be addressed by the Planning Commission and you in the future. And that is, if you don't let the developer have what they're entitled to have, then what you're really saying is the city needs to buy this land and the city needs to buy this land. And we might use some corridor funds from MAG to help us in the negotiation of this overall. Certainly, everything, there's nothing set in stone by any means, but what do we have before us today? Are there issues with this plan? Clearly, there are, yes. Is it a step in the right direction? Absolutely. And so, we want to get the public's input on this next level of review. Is it perfect? By no means, no. Is it a done deal? No. Are all the questions answered? No. In fact, we can't answer those questions. We need to solidify on the back of that napkin before some of the things can be studied by engineering, which is really where the intensive study begins at preliminary. Will this plan be improved upon? Yes, but it needs to be done on the public forum, at the public square. And so, presenting an idea isn't necessarily saying it's done. Presenting an idea allows us all to come together and talk about the idea. And so, I know there's a lot of anxious people because there's concerns, but especially the residents that live very close to this, we want to hear those concerns. Maybe some of this higher density here is eliminated. Maybe some of this higher density moves up here right along the front, right along Main Street so that they're backloaded and you don't have cars going right out onto Main Street. Maybe some of the concerns is the height. I know three-story versus two-story is a big concern. There's a lot of different things, everything is on the table. But that's really what we're talking about tonight is the transportation portion, which is, we wanted to bring our council up to speed on the discussion we've had with UDOT and the discussion we've had with the developer in this area about this and the fact that what will come to the council eventually, if this concept and this idea is accepted, is a potential rezone of this to commercial in this area here, which expands the city's tax base. And the potential for PUD or the alternative to that is buying land. So, with that, I hope I did Jason justice, he probably could have done this a lot better than I could have. I'm gonna turn the time over to the mayor and to Norm to really talk about-
If I can give a little history on this, since I've been mayor, which is how long?
Seven and a half years.
A long time, maybe not long enough, but anyway, I've been talking, asking UDOT in all of our mayor's meetings as we present our needs, that our need was a new interchange and it's inevitable. And we've heard residents complaining about the traffic on Main Street and trying to get on the freeway and off the freeway. And I understand that, as the mayor, I understand that and I've been trying for seven and a half years to get UDOT to listen. And we did finally get them to put us on to, what are they called, it's not phase, it's a-
Yeah, it's a phase one project.
Yeah, well, it used to be three.
Yeah, it still is a phase three on the full reconstruct, but there is a reconfiguration that has now been moved up to within the next 10-year window.
Yeah, so with all the work that we've been doing, not only myself but staff and trying to get this a higher priority, I remember seeing the first numbers come out on the interchange estimate on what it would take. It was around 24 million, and I know it's double that now at least, okay? And I try to get UDOT to understand, and I'm not sure people have for years and years and years, that why don't you plan ahead and do things before costs go up and residents, you know, the traffic goes up. And anyway, we finally got it to phase one this year. We've got it moved up to where it's a higher priority now. But then, they tell us that eight or nine years ago, they redid the decks on that interchange. And I think you probably remember when they did that. Well, they haven't got the full life use out of those decks yet. And so, rather than tear them out and start with something new, they want to use those decks until their life is up. Which, if you get a nice wide road, four-lane road going under those decks, they're not long enough, they're not, you know, to be able to do that. And so, they've come up with some ideas and staff has been, we had a meeting a couple of weeks, well, a couple of months ago. No, it was about a month ago. After all the Zoom and everything, you know, meeting, uh, over Zoom, we finally had a sit-down meeting with, with Region Three. Uh, from UDOT here in our, in our building. And. We actually got something done and, uh, we accomplished a lot. They told us what they, they expected. And, and we gave them some great suggestions, uh, staff is just amazing. Uh, how the thought that went into that. And we came out of that, I came out of that meeting thinking, wow, this is possible. We can get this done. And, and get it done right. But UDOT wants to do a few things, you know, just between traffic signals. Taking out the concrete ramp or retaining wall underneath the freeway. And putting in a retaining wall and straight up to give us another two lanes.
That's, that's one of the ideas.
Yes, and so they're still, they're still kicking it around. That, that way they can get, buy some time. It, it's really a Band-Aid, but, uh, buy some time to get the deck to where it's used. I suggested there was, I knew where they could get the steel to build that new straight up and down retaining wall. And that was in the cattle guard at the end of Main Street there. And they all laughed about that. So. So yeah, they're working on it. Uh, this is the most we've seen a move. Uh, towards getting something done in a long time. So, uh, we're encouraged by that.
We're encouraged by the developer working with us.
Yes, and that too. That, yeah, and, and the timing of it. It, it kinda came together of being able to get, you know, the meeting with UDOT and everything that's led up to this. As you've seen frontage roads in other cities that are close to the interchange. They've, you've seen what they've had to do, you know, as they improve the, that, that interchange. They have to push the frontage road away from the, the on and off ramps. And so anybody that drives should know that this was coming. It's, it was inevitable for San On Quin to have to do this. To be able to make the interchange work the way, the way it needs to. And like Ben said, it's, uh, our forefathers did an incredible job in preserving that corridor. Now you dot in their infinite wisdom, I, I don't wanna talk too bad about them, but they. Sit back and wait and it's not beyond them just to buy businesses and homes. That are new. And you don't have to be old, that are new and tear them down. And where's the wisdom in that? There isn't any in it. And so we're trying to be ahead of this. And be able to work with MAG to get some corridor preservation funds. Uh, to be able to help us get what we need. We've talked to MAG, they're working through that right now, uh, to see what we can do to, to help. Problem is, we have to have willing sellers of that property. Before corridor preservation funds can be, be used. So we've got a lot of work to do yet. But yes, but that would get the frontage road away from the interchange and. Be a benefit and a blessing to, to our city. I, I think. Uh, Maverick would, I, I, we don't know what the existing frontage road, how that would tie in or, or what that would be. As we do the new frontage road. But that would have to be discussed and, and talked with those business owners on what we could do there.
Yeah, likely it could be, you know, five years out before you see some of this come in, ten years out before you see other components come in. So. It's just really talking about preserving corridor now before homes are.
And there's two, ju- just, I, I understand there's a concern with other properties. There are two other properties that would be affected by this. The, the parcel that was just created south of Big O and the eastern edge of the Maverick vacant property that's there now. Those are not being, uh, um, I don't wanna say aggressively, we're not seeking after those right now because we don't have a current application. We have a current application on the, on the Pedersen property as it were. And so that's what we're pursuing at this point in time. But yes, there would be other properties that we would have to go and have that. Same discussion with and hopefully UDOT's study gets us farther down the road and we know more what it looks like and how it's going to all tie in and all that kinda stuff. But at this point in time, we're just, again, uh, the very early stages of good planning, quite frankly. To preserve corridors so that twenty years from now, homes don't have to be knocked out or businesses don't have to be moved.
How long, how long does it take them to do this study?
Uh, they've not given us a timeframe on that. I would imagine that it would be maybe six months to a year, maybe more. Depends on how extensive they get into it. But that's, that they've started it off now and.
Their, their. Emphasis right now is studying how they can put the Band-Aid on the interchange. That's what they're trying to do.
The short term.
It's taken years to get them to get it phase one so we could even do the study. That's the concern.
Yeah, and they bumped us ahead of a lot of projects in doing that. So, uh, which is, is good news for us. So. Anything else? Norm, do you have anything else?
Um, just thoughts or concerns, um, things that we should address. I mean, we're not really talking about the Pedersen right now, but you can if you want. But we're really talking about the transportation side of things. Some of the other concerns that we, we have is that we have businesses that are fronting those right now, you know? This frontage road coming out wouldn't, would be years away. Um, and we would. Like you see right here, instead of what our original concept was, was Ninth East going straight north. Um, Ninth East kinda curves and intersections in to this, this, uh, this frontage road. Well, we would wanna ensure that we still have good connectivity for our businesses as well. That they would be able to, to tie in and maybe, maybe instead of tying, uh, you know, being free flow right through it, maybe it's, it's ninety degrees into. Um, into those so that they can still have access or right-hand turns. We'll see that, what they, what they come up with in the study. Everything's on the table. Um, but. The time is really of the essence for these guys because what they were proposing. In the iteration that I, I didn't have, which is they were proposing straight up one hundred percent R-ten. Construction, which I think gave them, um, without any PUD at all. Um, but there was gonna have to be a rezone, whether it was gonna be commercial or, or residential. Um, this makes so much more sense because it gives a, a much larger commercial benefit to the community. Um, but it has its implications and part of those implications are, i- it, it moves some of those units somewhere else. And, and/or we buy them. And that's a very viable option. If, if the community does not want to have these. We just outright figure out how we come up with, you know, half million to a million dollars to buy that land. So there's just, everything's on the table.
Just to be clear also, that, and again, we're not focusing on Pedersen tonight, but. The way that that commercial property is currently shown would also require a rezone from R-ten to commercial where the orange is.
This is your time to really talk about.
My thought is this, it's, it's this kinda discussion that, that I think is very helpful because. And, and I wish the public would, would, would be a little more involved and then, and at least looking at what it takes. In the discussion and the give and take that it takes to get, uh, the, this kinda stuff done. Uh, people need to understand that, that without cooperation between the city and landowners. Those, the, the floods, what do you call them? The debris basins? The debris basins would cost the citizens a lot of money. And if there can be a little work between the, the landowner and the city and come up with a, a good plan that benefits everybody, I think it benefits everybody. But this is why the people, the public needs to, to watch this and listen and, and get an idea of what it takes. To get a, to a project like this.
I know you have some thoughts.
I like where we're headed with this, um. Uh, as far as working with the landowners and preserving the corridor, we, we do need to think ahead on traffic. That's such a mess up there now. And everybody knows that and we're working on it. So we do need to have that in mind as we look at this. That's, I can see that's gonna be the problem. This is gonna come to us way before we have a solution probably. So we gotta try to think ahead what UDOT's gonna tell us, which who knows? Um, so whatever we can preserve there, I think is just in our best interest, even though we may not see the fruits of that for many years. But I appreciate you working with them and them working with us. It's like, uh, Dave said. Having to come up with that kinda money every time we need a debris basin. Um, may not be viable where. I- if the developer can help us out, it, it, it's just, it may work better.
How many debris basins do we need on the east bench?
Uh, there's six planned. And if I remember correctly, the estimate for land acquisition for all six of those is north of two and a half million dollars. Now, this only takes care of a portion of one of those, but, but again, it's a start, right? We gotta start somewhere. That, those numbers, if anybody's interested are in our, on our website. You can go find those in the, in the debris basin study that was done several years ago.
And maybe for the public's information, as we sit down and talked about this route. Of where the frontage road, or the proposed frontage road goes. We looked at even taking it farther east up, uh, you know, some way or somewhere. And we had a corridor that we could, could go. So we've looked at all the other options and this one really seems to be the. The best that we, we looked at. Uh, of, of getting what we need. So.
You know, I, I kinda equate this to, um, Apollo thirteen, you know, the Apollo thirteen, right? They, there is a disaster out there. And they had to go into the limb and this little limb had to try to steer this whole ship around, right? Well, so much of this is out of our control and we're trying to affect. Changes in such a way that makes our residents happy. Makes our property owners happy and still controls the bigger ship, which is UDOT. Because if there is a, a corridor outlined. They're gonna naturally find, water, water goes downhill, right? It finds the most, uh, easy path to do so. I think UDOT will follow that as well. But. We won't know until that study is complete. And the fact is, we're just lucky that they're doing the study now because of the good efforts. Of the mayor really reaching out to, to them to get it on the horizon.
Well, and if we don't preserve corridor, they'll put it wherever they wanna put it and that does mean businesses, houses, whatever at the time.
On what to do because we knew it was gonna have to happen. And we just thought, there's no way. We're not gonna, we're not gonna have. The Pedersen Development and others put in nice homes or infrastructure or whatever and then come back and have to tear it all out. I, I, I just don't, I don't like that. And trust me, there's other suggestions. Ben had one. He tried to talk you out into taking one ninety-eight and doing the frontage road. All the way to the south exit and calling it Highway one ninety-eight. So you dot would have that and they, no. They don't wanna do that. So.
We've talked about other ideas too about maybe it's one of those interchanges where half the interchange is where it's currently at and half of it is much further north. You know, sometimes you, you can get on and get off. They're, they're looking at everything, um, but in their minds. We don't need to replace the entertainments. We just need to Band-Aid it along. And that's where they might see us today. Because let's face it, we are a small fish compared to the. Region three issues they're facing in Orem and Lehigh and everything else.
Right, I, I tell people all the time that, that when we have thirty-five thousand cars a day that go over that bridge, those bridges. That, that's a lot of cars until you look at sixteen hundred North and Orem. And there's two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand cars a day that go over those bridges. So. Again, that's why they focus where they focus because there's a lot more people that are affected up there than there are down here. Is it inconvenient for our residents? Absolutely. But you have to look at, they have a limited amount of funding that they can use. They have to put it to where they feel like is the best use of those funds.
But on top of that, they're very appreciative of the, of the legislature this last year, giving them more money than they've ever had. To be able to, to do some things that, that are, are gonna benefit us in transportation.
And, and a huge aspect of this is that MAG is kind of like a limb too. They're kinda trying to steer you down along as well. And MAG and all the projects that are evaluated through the tip process and whatnot, eventually make it through and are voted on by the mayors. And then alter as a, as a recommending body and then the county commissioners ultimately approve. And, um, and when those mayors are reviewing things, there needs to be some give and take because. Not all the money's gonna continually go to Orem and Lehigh because that's, even though.
They've had this and this and this. When's it gonna get something down here?
When is South County gonna receive some funding as well? And so having, having the mayor actively involved in all of the off, off-site meetings and. MAG and COG and building relationships and whatnot is really huge to even make it so that we are on phase one.
Tell us what your thoughts are.
I have a whole lot of thoughts right now, but none of them are. Organized enough to. Share. Um, I do wanna say though that. I, I will be very, very cautious. Anything that I share before. Before this concept plan of San On Quin Estates is officially. An agenda item on the city council agenda. Because I do believe passionately in the process, the legal process that exists. For every single development to go through. And I do not want to say anything that would. Appear to influence that process. Um, or the planning commission and the discussion that they will have next week. On this as an independent and separate body from city council. It's very, very important to me to keep that boundary. Um, and I, and I, um. I do agree that we need to, we need to look very carefully at the corridor preservation. Um, I do understand that we have a need for the debris basins. Um, in order to even protect the homes that are already existing on the east bench. Other than that, I, I. I feel strongly that the planning commission needs to have the chance to have their discussion. And share their thoughts and, and work through that legal process. And then the developer can take feedback that they get. From the planning commissioners and the public at that meeting next week. And then. Kind of consider that and any changes that they wanna make in the meantime before it comes to us. Other than that, I am. To myself if that's okay for now.
Just, Mayor, one more thought if I can. I, I, I wanna say that. For me, I appreciate the work you've done and the work the staff's done working with you, Dot. I've, I've witnessed and, and I'm not, I don't wanna put you down by any means. But I watched them tear sixteen brand-new homes down when they put Bangor Highway in. And I don't wanna see that here. So thank you for the, for trying to get them to see.
Yeah, I think how many roads they could build with the money they spend on.
Just buying that.
Buying homes and businesses and tearing them down. So, you know, like, like Ben said, that we don't know. How much UDOT needs. They wouldn't even give us an idea of how wide the road would be, the frontage road. So we're just kinda guessing it, uh, what normal roads would be to, to request this from Pedersen and. And, uh, to see what we need there. So. We're doing our best.
And, and I, and I. I will listen into the planning commission meeting like I usually do next week and I'm really. Um, looking forward to their discussion and anxious to hear what their thoughts are. I, the, the last. Concept that I had seen showed all single families straight up R-ten. Um, the first time that I saw this newer one was last night. Um, when I checked out the, the planning commission agenda and so. It's, it's gonna take some time to kind of process all of that.
Okay. Anything else on this? We don't have time to do Utah State. University student recommendations. Review any agenda items?
Um, sure, if, if you'd like this. A minute. To do that. If I can get to the right. I'll just go through things really quickly. I know we're getting close to running out of time. Hate how that does that. I can't get the outside bar, but. Okay, here we go.
If you buy a Mac, you can figure that out.
We have the minutes from the the previous two meetings, of course, the invoice register. We also have on the consent agenda. The out of state training request for our operations manager and assistant city manager, Dennis just walked in. Maybe we ought to have him introduce himself. He's a new employee.
We'll wait to the next meeting.
Okay, well, he's going to be downstairs with with Congressman.
That's right. Hang on. Dennis, come on up. Tell us about yourself.
Council members, mayor. Some of you already know me.
What have you been doing the last four years?
For the last four years, I've been the city manager for a small town in northeastern Maine called Caribou. Touts itself and is the northeastern most city in the lower 48 states. And gets 160 inches of snow on average every year and six months of winter. And I took my my five children back there with me and three of them decided they wanted to come back to college here this fall. And we felt that was a good time to to try to relocate as well. And have definitely fond memories of of working here in Santaquin for over 11 years and working with. With you in different capacities and looking forward to being back here, working with you again. And it certainly is, it's. It's amazing to me how much growth has happened in four years since I left. And certainly that brings with it lots of challenges as opportunities and. And I know strife and everything else that comes with it. I did keep in touch a little bit with with Santaquin as I was away and it's it's just neat to see everything that's happening and. Look forward to being back here again with you and and serving you as much as I and as best as I can.
Thank you. Any questions for him before he sits down? You'll be around, so. Yeah, welcome back. Okay, run through the agenda items through.
Okay, so we have the out of state training request. We have the. Ratifying the purchase of the real property. This is a parcel of property just south of the two that the city acquired. For the relocation or for the construction of the new city hall. This will allow for a future roadway to connect from Center Street into the back parking lot area. And and that that enhance that block with more gathering space for our public. We have a an old Ford or old Chevy Trail Trailblazer. And the fire department that we're surplusing and then Utah, or excuse me, Utah County has its municipal grant. Action that annually that needs.
Annual one, every year that we get that, yeah. Community services already got it. Specified where they want it, so.
Yep. We have. Three recognitions and we'll go through those a little bit later. Appointment to the library board from the mayor. And introduction of some of the employees that we hired during COVID that haven't had the opportunity yet to come and visit with all of you. We also have a change order on Highland Drive Canyon Road project. Norm will go over that. This is to enhance the. Pedestrian connectivity of the new intersection that we're putting in to the area, to Orchard Hills Elementary, really, along Highland Drive. Acceptance of a Tanner annexation petition. This is the parcel of property in Summit Ridge on the. East side of the road where it kind of. You know, goes vacant for a time before it hits the church. That parcel never did come into the city.
Ordered on the east by the railroad tracks and some parkway on the west.
So they're petitioning to come into the city with our ten zoning. And as far as resolutions are concerned, we are looking to transition ownership of a water line. That is. Currently owned by Genola to become the ownership of Santaquin. We relocated a meter years ago and we'll talk about that. And then some discussion with regard to water rates on the consolidated fee schedule for those who live in the county and not within the city. And so we'll see what the council's feelings are on that. That's what's on the agenda and with that, I'll turn it back to you, mayor.
Okay, we'll adjourn then till seven o'clock. So, thank you.